All right, we're going to call the public, the public hearing on the tentative budgets for the town fund, general assistance sewer, and the road district fund, the amended budget to order. We have a roll call.
Trustee Nierdowski.
Present.
Trustee Keenly. Trustee Wotecki.
Present.
Trustee Dante.
Present.
Supervisor Bussie.
Present.
So, this is just a hearing, a public hearing for the, for the amended budgets. If you remember, this is for, the reason for this is due to expenses that came in higher than budgeted for the building and timing issues regarding the 2019-2020 budget. The timing issues, in that, in that regard, the timing issues were that expenses were expected to 2019 to 20, the 2020, 2019-2020 fiscal budget came in on 2020-2021. So, since we need a balanced budget, we have to adjust for that. And then also in 2021, 2020-2021, expenses on some of the, the buildings came in a little higher than budgeted, as expect, as usually happens with when you're building something, change orders. So, we need to, because we need a, because we need a balanced budget, we need to amend the, the town fund, which also includes general assistance sewer and the road district budget for 2020-2021. Are there, is there any, any, this is just, we're not voting or anything here, are there any public comments on the, on the budget amendment? No? Okay, are there any board comments or questions? Okay, if not, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. There's no discussion, all in favor, yes?
You didn't vote on accepting that hearing, or the tentative, right?
Pardon?
Did you vote on accepting the tentative?
Not in the hearing, we didn't.
Okay.
No, we didn't, no, in the hearing, we don't. Just a motion to, so the motions have been made to adjourn and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, the meeting's adjourned. We're going to go right into the regular board meeting. So, everybody got your stuff ready? Okay. So, let me call the, call the meeting to order and let's all stand for the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice over all.
Okay, Clerk Saturn, could you please call roll call?
Trustee Nierdowski.
Present.
Trustee Wotecki.
Present.
Trustee Dante.
Present.
Supervisor Bussie.
Present. Okay, we've got the roll call. Is there any public comment today? Yes ma'am, if you go up to the podium. And if you could state your name and the town you're from, that would be great. A little up for the clerk to hear.
Hi, my name is Heather Maldonado and I'm in township here on Dirk King Terrace. I came last month to talk to you guys about the signage and the traffic and everything, so I'm just here to follow up to see, I know that it's probably not like done, but just to see if you, were you able to make any connections or have any conversations or set up any meetings or what have you. And also, I have a copy of the letter that I wrote to Mayor Johnson too about it, just so that, you know, I'm working at all angles, I'm talking with Police Chief Walsh in Elk Grove as well, and so, just need to stay on top of it because it'll, you know, we just, we just want to get it addressed before, God forbid, something happens.
Well, the two issues that you brought before us was the roads and also then the weed control on one of the lots over there, I believe, as well.
Yes, yes, and Mr. Kokamais has been handling that, they, after my last exchange with him.
Yeah, we said, we, just on that issue, we sent them, him a letter.
Oh, good.
And he responded positively to it, and we followed up our highway supervisor, followed up on it, and it is being boded.
Yes.
And if there's any further problems, just let our administrator know and we will, we will once again follow through. So, that should not be a problem going forward.
Thank you, yes.
Then, on the, on the roads, we did talk to Cook County, we did speak to the sheriff's office, they indicated that they will continue to run police officers by the, the area. They said they've had officers out there and that, that their, their argument was, or their point was, is that we have not seen really any speeding. They said they may look like it, but they not. He said, they, they said that there's been some discussion about putting another speed bump down on Repolo, but at this prime, they, they felt that the speeding issue, there was not a speeding issue. So, we talked to the county sheriff's office about that, we also asked them how they, how they, how, how are they enforcing the weight limits, and they really didn't give us an answer on that.
Right, right.
So, I mean, so that's where we are right now. Once again, we don't have control of that, but we did reach out, we do have control, or we do have a say in the weed control and in the lots, but on the streets, we did follow, we did follow up on that, and we talked to the, the agents or the organization that does do the enforcement and is responsible for it, and they said that, once again, that they'll have police officers out there periodically, but that they have not, they have not seen speeding, and that, that, and they really didn't give us an answer how they're going to manage the, the weight of the trucks or the size of the trucks coming through there. And Paul, what did they say that they were, they had thought about or were thinking about a speed bump, another speed bump?
No, it was just something that I had asked them, and I don't, I don't really recall getting an answer specifically.
Yeah.
That's where we stand, it's like, you know, we talk and then there's no answer. And I can tell you that I have, anytime I see a sheriff out there, I, when I'm driving by or if I'm, I walk the neighborhood, I stop every single time and I've stopped, or I'd stop to say, because they sit in the neighborhood.
Yeah.
And they sit on Vera Lane.
Yeah.
Facing east.
Yeah.
Now, how are they supposed to see any trucks speeding? And I'm to the point where I'm like, do I need to buy a camera or just sit in my driveway? Because I carry my phone around me all the time, and I swear it'll be the time that I'm sitting in the house and I think, oh, I'm going to run out to get the mail or something, and there will go a truck flying, I don't have it, you know? And so, and even Police Chief Walsh said, you know, when we sit there, of course, there's changed behavior, right? So, and I've requested the sheriff, I don't see Elk Grove out there, but he and I just had the conversation, but with the sheriff, I've told them, can you please sit on Lee Street, which bifurcates the neighborhood, and sit further back so they don't see you? Now, wouldn't that make more sense? He, and the guy says to me, so I'm running to Starbucks one day, and I'm like, can you please, he said, oh yeah, I'll go sit on Lee Street, and I said, but can you sit further back? Oh yeah. So, I come back from Starbucks, and he's right at the intersection of Dirk King, and I'm like, they see you, there's no, you know, and I'm just thinking, I don't, I don't understand. And, and I even told the guy, I said, I don't even care if they get a ticket, I don't even want them to get a ticket, I just want them to slow down. And if it takes a ticket to get their attention, or somebody, and that's why I'm requesting a stop sign or a speed bump, because when they're around, they either don't do it, or, you know, it's at all hours of the night. And even the other night, people, it's summertime, nine, 10 o'clock, yes, the kids are still up, they're sitting on the sidewalk, they're walking in the street, they're allowed to, you know, I mean, so.
Well, I think, I think that, I think that we still, we still have a, a call to them that we will follow up on still regarding, we wanted to try to get an answer of how they're handling the weight issue. And, and there's some other things that we can still pursue, but it's, at some point, it's going to get to the, it's, it's going to be that the county is the one who enforces and manages that, and really, if, if we're talking about any sort of political leverage that you could put the bear on, it's going to have to be your Cook County, the Cook County Commissioner, that's Morrison, right? And that would.
Right, and that's how we started, I mean, we didn't start, we started with you guys last year and, and Elk Grove and didn't really go anywhere.
Yeah, Elk Grove won't have, I mean, they can do like we can, well.
But they own the street.
Yeah.
I mean, they, it's their street, so they have, they can police it.
No, it's, it's.
Absolutely, I've talked with Police Chief Walsh, and he said, I can send my guys, I need to send a memo to let them know, because they were sort of like unaware that, that, I use that word, I don't know, I don't, that that kind of was their street or something, because township maintains it.
Now, that's confusing, because it's unincorporated area, an unincorporated area.
Well, they, they build those buildings next to the street.
So, this is half and half again?
Yes.
Half the street is village?
Yeah, but it's.
I thought a law changed that, I thought a law changed it.
I thought it was the whole street.
Yeah, law, the law.
They could have built their street then.
Okay. Well, if the law changed it and it's not all the county, then it's, then that street then is the village, then it's, the village is responsible, the county is the one where it's, where in the middle there, I mean, with, with the street to go, the one that's not on the, on the, on Repolo, yeah, that that would be the county, and they, they have to do the enforcement there. That's where, that's where the county commissioner comes into play. And if that is the Elk Grove, I, if that, you're right, because the, if the law has changed where it's the full street, then it would be Elk Grove, and then it's, then it's Mayor Johnson and Walsh, and Chief Walsh.
Right, but we're your residents, we're your constituents, we need help.
We can't, we can't do anything, we can call them.
You can't talk to the mayor or whoever.
We can call them and talk to them, yeah, we have, I mean, that's the problem, I know a former supervisor had long conversations with, with the mayor and with the police chief and with the village manager, and they keep saying, yeah, well, we're, we're taking care of, we're taking care of it, but in the end, they're the one whose officers are going to have to be out there and going to have to do it, and.
Well, the sheriff can do it though, the sheriff can take it.
Well, the sheriff can do it too, and, you know.
And he's not, they're not.
And, and they're, we, they're, they're the ones we just talked to again here, and they, they came back and argued that, well, we, we're there, you know, like you said, they, I don't know if they're looking the right way or whatever the case, and they say, we're not seeing speeding. So, you know, I, you're in a.
And it's not just the trucks, it's people cutting through the neighborhood where we find, and it's getting to the point where the neighbors are so upset that there's going to be an altercation.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's not going to be pleasant.
Right.
And it's not, and it's not, it's not the right thing to do, but people are fed up because we're not getting a response from the municipalities and all the government entities that are involved.
Yeah.
And.
I, yes, I, you know, once again, we can talk and we can call like we have, but we have no ability to enforce, or we, we just, it's not, not ours, it's the, if it's the, if the, if one road is the village and one road is the county, then that's.
Right, and I understand that you can't enforce and we don't have police for township and what have you, but to help put the leverage where it needs to be so something gets addressed and not just, like you said, we kind of get the same thing from county, they're like, well, we don't know, or yeah, or, or no answer, or what have you.
Right, right.
And I'm like, no, we need to have, I want an answer, I want an answer, and so.
Well, we've got, we've got a call coming, we're supposed to have a call coming back from the county on the second issue, and we'll, we'll follow up on that when we, when we talk to them. And I guess at that point, the only thing I can think of is if we try to get all the parties together in one room to discuss it, but that still doesn't.
I would love it.
That still doesn't guarantee you any results, is what I'm saying, is.
Right, but at least it's not being ping ponged and, you know, I've had, and even.
It still could, coming out of that meeting, they could still ping pong it, to be quite, I mean, I've seen that numerous times where you all get together and everybody's going to, you know, have a kumbaya party, and then they walk out and nothing gets done. So, I mean, this is.
God help them if a kid gets hit on the bike, we'll have a kumbaya meeting real fast.
No, 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 I don't, I don't disagree with you, but this is going to take, at some point, it's going to take the county making a commitment to policing that area or the village a commitment to policing that area more aggressively than apparently they are.
Right, right.
And what we can do is help facilitate it, but we can't, we never will be able to enforce it.
I agree, and I'm just looking for your help, I'm going, I follow up with, like I said, I'll give you a copy of the letter that I just sent to Mayor Johnson, I'm following up with police, I followed up with Police Chief Walsh, Walsh last week, I'll follow up with Morrison's office tomorrow, I, I'll keep pressure on this until something's done.
Okay, all right, well, let's.
So, I just want you to know that we're still here.
Yeah, give him a copy, give Paul a copy of the, of the letter.
Mm-hmm.
We're going to wait till we talk to the county, and then we'll pursue maybe trying to get all, all parties together for a meeting, maybe in neutral ground, which would be here, but maybe we get everybody, everybody here to sit down and talk, and hopefully with some of the, with some of the, the neighbors, maybe you guys select two or three of you to come, and, because I usually find it's more productive than having everybody in the room at the same time.
Absolutely.
And see if we can get some discussion or some follow through on this, but I've got to have their, I got to have, they've got to cooperate, be willing to do it too.
Right.
So, and, and, so I, you know, once again, I mean, we'll, we'll go to the full extent we can, but we are limited in terms of what we can do. I mean, if we, if, you know, it'd be great if that incorporated areas, we had full control of everything, but we don't, we, we only, we only have, we have sort of limited, limited responsibilities and we can't, because we're run by state law, not by home rule, we only can do what the state law allows us to do, so, okay?
Yes.
Has, has the mayor been helpful?
Um.
In, in, in your, in a, in a response to you?
Right, well, I just sent this letter last week, so I haven't expected a response yet, and I assume he's not going to respond, I assume he's going to pass the letter to whoever and then, and somebody will follow up with me at some point, which, you know, I don't know where that'll get me, so who knows, maybe he'll respond and be like, absolutely, speed bump it is, you know, and we're done. But I'm just like, I'll come to this meeting every month, I'll go to the village meetings every month, I'll call Morrison every month, you know, I'm just, I have to keep it going until something is done, because it's just not, it's just not safe, it's not safe.
And that's why, that's why I asked it, because it seems that if it's as simple as a speed bump and that's something that the village can handle and that mitigates the issue.
Right, right. Even a stop sign, but like I told Police Chief Walsh, you know, if they're not obeying the speed limit signs, they'll blow through a stop sign. And as a matter of fact, when Police Chief Walsh was out in our neighborhood about a month ago to talk to us about this, the stop sign on Repolo, somebody went through, and we know everybody in the neighborhood, so it wasn't somebody from the neighborhood, blew right through it, right, and he was like, wow, right in front of him, you know what I mean? And so, I mean, not even a brake light, you know what I mean, not even a slowdown, just went right through the stop sign. So, this is what we're dealing with, and I just, I find it reprehensible. And, and just for the safety of our kids, like I said, I don't care about the trucks, the trucks can come and go, and the truck drivers are generally nice, and some of them will put their hazards on and go 10 miles an hour down the street and wave, and, and one of the guys, I, you know, every time I say thank you, and they're like, we get it, we get it, but then you've got some of them that just don't. And so, it seems like the only way they're going to get it is if they get in trouble or something, you know, ticketed or something, I don't know. So, thank you for listening.
Thanks, thank you. Okay, good, Paul, you got it there? Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, well, is there any other further public comment? No? Okay, then we'll go to the consent agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda that anyone would like removed? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, um, is there, this will be a roll call vote?
Okay, Trustee Nierdowski.
Aye.
Trustee Wotecki.
Aye.
Trustee Dante.
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie.
Aye.
Discussion and potential action on approval minutes. We can approve this individually, these two minutes, June 28th, the public hearing, June 28th, the regular board meeting, we can consider them individually or, or jointly, if there's a, is there a motion to accept these, to approve these jointly?
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, is there any discussion on the minutes, anybody have any issues with the minutes? Very good, I always had issues, you don't have any? Okay, is there, there's a, we'll have a voice vote here to approve, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, no presentations, reports, assessor, please.
Well, you all have my written report, which is a little longer than usual. I wanted to stress the point here that in the past, we've always been told, well, you know when you're going to be open for appeals, you know when you're going to be open for appeals for board of review. According to the Cook County Assessor's website, we were scheduled somewhere around September or October to be open for appeals. We had no notification that we opened up in June. This is problematic on a couple of levels. First of all, we were very fortunate that no one was on vacation at the time, because staffing always becomes a problem. Second of all, when they opened us in June, they did not give us the new data. We had no new assessed values for the properties that had changed value from the previous year. Needless to say, there was a tremendous amount of finger pointing down at the county, which seems to be the rule of thumb, and then they blamed us, which is kind of hard to believe because we don't generate those numbers. Fortunately, we are absolutely blessed that our Cook County Township Assessor's president, Assessor Ali El Saffar, and our IT person who structures our Assessor's Information Management Program immediately jumped into the fray and have been working on getting the county data to assimilate into our program. Now, that is well and good, and that will work out very well for the rest of the townships that will be open as the year progresses. However, we close on Thursday. So, we will have gone the entire appeal period having to use the finals of board of review. So, this is what we go through, and if you notice in the past, I could get very aggravated when it was asserted that we always knew what our schedule was going to be and we always knew, no. That's not the case, and so, we literally have to turn on a dime. Once we were notified, and by the way, we were notified by the Wheeling Township Assessor's Office, because they happened to go on the website and said, oh, hey, we thought we'd call you and let you know you were open. That was how we found out that we were open for appeals. So, what's going down at the county? Well, suffice it to say, if I'm going to be polite, it's confused. Other than that, we are working smarter as far as email and phone. The next time that you get a statistical report, we usually have the number of phone calls received and returned. We are going to add to that emails, because we're doing a great deal now with emails, particularly with people who are particularly adept at navigating the county system, younger people perhaps would be, although we've had somebody in their A.D.s who's very adept at it, so that will be added to our statistical report, because we are doing a great deal more with email. Any questions you might have?
In this, this, this appeal period, what is your, I mean, how does it compare in terms of residents served with, with the last appeal?
Well, first of all, we always assume that this third year is going to be slow, and it, it's been steady, and from that standpoint, that was anticipated. Next year, I fear, because that's going to be our try, and with the way the numbers have been manipulated, and God knows, the tax bills, second installment are going to be late, we've yet to see, we are now dealing with the third highest equalization rate in the history of the county, 3.322. So, we're going to have to look and see what the tax rates are doing, it depends, we may get incredibly busy once those tax bills come out. People are making an assumption that their bill is going to go down by whatever the COVID factor is, and that's not necessarily true. So, we may have a lot of surprised residents. It remains to be seen.
The COVID factor, at one time, he had talked about doing a earlier assessment than the triannual, now it's just going to be factored into the triannual?
Last year, they put a COVID factor on all properties in the county. It was not a straight factor, like say with Elk Grove saying that it was 10% across the board, it was a range, ours ranged from in the nines to the 12 percentage. Now, what I found interesting about that is those who had had a successful appeal got the lower range, the ones that didn't appeal got the higher range. So, what it managed to do is compress that data stratum, which in turn almost makes it more difficult for someone to appeal based on uniformity, because they've compressed the strata. So, that remains to be seen too. We've had issues with them in the past, that they won't take current sales, which is insane. I've also talked with the IAAO, the International Association of Assessing Officers, and they were incredulous that anyone would put a factor on when we weren't through the crisis. And you have to take into consideration that that factor went on when the residential real estate market was thriving, my apologies, my apologies. So, there's a lot of things going on that, from a professional standpoint, is not good assessment, but that's what we have and that's what we deal with.
Any other questions or comments or?
No, it's just a lot of unnecessary pressure.
A lot of pressure.
Yeah, yeah. I admire you.
Yeah, but I don't relish your job either.
Strength, see if nobody else wants it either.
All right, if there's no further questions for Connie, Clerk Saturn?
Yes, I'm also thankful I'm the clerk, not the assessor. Okay, I have a very short report, there was no FOIAs or filings this month, and the other thing is, we're still waiting for the Illinois Attorney General website to be up again so that the new, newly elected officials can take their Open Meetings Act trainings. So, we will let you know when that can happen, and that's it.
Okay, thank you. All right, Supervisor, just a couple of quick comments, we're continuing to work with the village regarding the remediation issues on the north side. The village is, is, has been attempting to work with IEPA to achieve a, a result where further remediation is not needed, and where either a new NFR is issued or where a, the old NFR, which they got in 2000, is, 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 is reapproved. I'm not sure which way this is going to go, whether they'll be able to move forward without actually remediating, or whether further remediation will be needed. At this stage, it appears what needs to be done is additional testing, and we're, we're, we're working with them to get through this process. The sooner this can be resolved, the sooner we can begin to work on the bike safety and on the challenge course. And as long as they, as long as the village is moving forward in good faith, we'll continue to, to work with them, and I have no reason to believe they won't, but if there ever were an issue where things were just getting drug out for no real reason, then we would have, we would take the issues in our own hand, which, and proceed with remediation on our own, which would, which we have the right to do under their, under our contract. But at this point.
But that's at our expense.
Pardon?
That's at our expense then?
No.
No?
No.
Okay.
If, if we move forward with this, if we would at some point believe that we were not getting the response or the, or the, the action on, on the part of the village, which like I said, that's not an issue at this point, but if it were that case, our contract with them is that they will cover the cost of the remediation, that any remediation that's needed. At this point, we're allowing them to move forward to explore this possibility, this possibility, and if they have to, and if remediation is needed, even allowing them to conduct the remediation as long as we get an NFR and it moves forward in a timely process, a timely fashion. If for some reason, it's no longer moving in that direction, we could move forward with their own, with our own vendor to remediate and, and then obtain the, the, the.
The report.
Yeah, the refund, funding from them for that.
And so, like, if I may, do you, do we have, like, if they don't by a certain time, do you have an estimated timeframe?
Yeah, in, in my mind?
Yeah.
I wouldn't, I haven't anything in writing, but, and I'm really watching more how they're progressing and, you know, because I, I realize we're dealing with the IEPA and my environmental protection agency, and I know there's, there's a bureaucracy there and there's issues they have to deal with, and so I, I'm not going to hold them to any firm time. So I'm not going to hold them to any firm time schedule, as long as they seem to be, as long as they appear to be moving forward and doing everything they can. So it is somewhat subjective, and the Board obviously would be part of any decision to say, "No, we're going to move forward now on our own." But like I said, I don't expect that to be the case. And they've been, you know, the village manager, Mr. Rumel, has been very cooperative with us, and we've been trying to cooperate with him, but you never know. So, okay, the other thing is, I'm sure you also saw, we are expanding the food pantry hours on Tuesdays. It will stay open longer, and we're going to see, we'll do this for an extended period of time, and see what type of response we get and what type of demand and interest there is in it. And then either one of three things: continue it, discontinue it, or add additional days. So we'll see how this progresses. This is something that we had been talking with the previous supervisor about a year or so ago, and we just have got to the point now where we feel we can move forward and give it a shot. Okay, that's my report. Does anybody have any questions for me on any issues? No? Okay. I saw the article in the paper about the food pantry hours, expanded food pantry hours.
Right, yeah.
So that was good. And we want to get that out so that people are aware of it and take advantage of it. Okay, is there a motion to approve the reports?
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, voice for... All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, old business, employee handbook revisions. What I'd like to do tonight, you've all had a chance to look through the draft, this draft. I have a number of issues that I've gone through with Paul, our administrator, and I'm setting up an appointment or a time to talk to our attorney to address those issues. What I'd like to do is for all of you, now that you've gone through this, if you have questions, issues, recommendations, or whatever, send them or provide them to Paul. We will answer any ones that we can answer, or add them to our discussion with our attorney, Jason Tremblay. And then hopefully, with your input and with our input and the discussions we have, we'll come up with a final draft that hopefully we can present at the next meeting. There were, when I worked through this, several things that I found somewhat questionable and I felt needed to be addressed. I didn't think we were ready. I'm not ready at this point to put this forward as a, for a vote or approval. So anything you have, please get ahold of Paul, and we'll get back to you with an answer, or we will add it to the questions and issues we're working with him.
And so if we have any additional comments or questions, what timeframe or day are we looking for?
The sooner the better. I mean, we'll probably set up, I'll probably set up a call for him in about two weeks.
Okay, so...
Because I've got some things I...
Within the next week or so?
Yeah, within the next week or so, yeah. And just, you know, it could be something that you have a question about, you don't understand it, or it's something that you don't like, or something you recommended be added or adjusted.
Okay.
And then we will follow up with everybody, and then also come up with a final draft that we can then hopefully, at the next, hopefully at the next meeting can discuss, and then either vote at that meeting or the next meeting. It's not essential that we do this immediately. I want to make sure we do it right, because obviously this has not been updated for a period of time.
Okay.
Okay, let's see here. Then ordinance 2020-01, Budget Inappropriation Ordinance for the town, the GA, NGA. On that, we've had our public hearings. We've had it on the table for the required period of time. Is there a motion, and then we'll have, if there are any discussion, is there a motion to approve the amended, the amended budget ordinance 2020-01?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Is there any discussion? Any questions or any discussion on the amended budget? Okay, if not, roll call.
Trustee Narodowski?
Aye.
Trustee Wotecki?
Aye.
Trustee Dante?
Aye.
Supervisor Bussi?
Aye.
All right, ordinance 2020-02RD for Oak District. We have an amended budget up for a vote today. Once again, we have had the hearings, and we have had, we have had it on the table for the required period of time. So what's going to get a motion to approve, a second, and then if there's any discussion, roll discussion.
So moved.
I'll second.
All right, any discussion on the Oak District amended budget for 2020? No? If not, all right, roll call.
Trustee Narodowski?
Aye.
Trustee Wotecki?
Aye.
Trustee Dante?
Aye.
Supervisor Bussi?
Aye.
All right, that's the old business. We'll go to new business. We have one item there. That's the proposed amendment for Resolution 2013-6, Elected Official Compensation. This was, the Clerk Saturn reviewed the elected official's compensation and travel policy. This was done with an eye towards encouraging more participation, not only in the, within other, with other organizations networking, but also within the community. It also is done to encourage educational, taking advantage of educational opportunities, and it broadens the number of events or items that the trustees can attend and be compensated for. There are still limitations. So if you look down the line here, we are encouraging people to, you all to participate in educational meetings or seminars hosted by the MTA, by TAC or TOI. And this is, these are our primary organizations that we work with for educational purposes, and we will fund any approved educational meeting or seminar by these organizations for reimbursement. Also, we would also, under this policy, approve funding for educational seminars that are specific to township operations. So that's budgets, legal issues, responsibilities of legal, of elected officials, et cetera. These other educational seminars outside of the three organizations we discussed would need to be approved by the supervisor via email. So if you wanted to do something else, or take another educational class that meets these, would meet these parameters, all you'd have to do is email me. I'd take a look at it and email you back, copying Paul, so we have a record of it, and tell you, yeah, you're approved or not approved. We would also, we're also allowing a maximum of eight meetings per year of any Elk Grove Township with, for any Elk Grove Township funded agency or organization. So if we fund Kenneth Young Center, and you would want to attend one of their meetings or are invited to attend one of their meetings, you would be compensated for that. Up to eight meetings. I don't think probably any of you will do eight meetings unless you get on their advisory board. I was on the Kenneth Young Board as an ex officio member representing the township, so I went to all their meetings. I know that Andrea was on the daycare, the Elk Grove Township Daycare Center Board as an ex officio member. And so back then, we, I don't think we got, I didn't get compensated for it. And so now what we're doing is that if you do want to get more involved or want to attend any meetings of the organizations that we fund, we will encourage you to do that up to eight meetings. Okay? Representing Elk Grove Township at meetings with other local elected officials, so to discuss common community issues or to present information about Elk Grove Township. So Mount Prospect is an example, holds an elected official's breakfast, or they did before COVID, where they would get together, the Mount Prospect Village, the Park District, the county officials, the township officials, so that'd be Wheeling and Mount Prospect. And they'd often have a, they'd also invite the state rep and the state senate and the congressman to attend for discussions on various issues that have a common interest. You would be compensated for attending that meeting, because it would be for the purpose of discussing community issues and representing Elk Grove Township in that regard. Also, representing Elk Grove Township at village parades, Memorial Day and Veterans Day events, or events approved by the supervisor via email. So parades, Memorial Day and Veterans Day are allowed. Anything else beyond that is certainly, could be approved, but you'd have to go with, once again, an email to the supervisor, and the supervisor would say, "Yeah," with a copy to the administrator, and to make sure that it's properly recorded. And then presentations to local groups, organizations about Elk Grove Township's services. So I've given presentations, for instance, to the League of Women Voters, and there is a slide rack for a PowerPoint presentation for doing this, and we have the equipment to do it as well, too. And I'm looking to have that improved or cleaned up by our public relations firm at some point, but you could take that, like Vince, you're in the Lions Club, you could take that and get on their agenda for one of their meetings and do a presentation on the township, and what we do and what our services are, we came, come from. And you could be reimbursed for that as well, too. So as you can see, it really broadly expands the opportunities you have to represent the township or to improve your educational, your knowledge and your ability to operate effectively as a trustee via education. Now, the requirement on this is that there's a form, which is the second page there, both sides, which needs to be filled out and turned in monthly. Now, you could either do it in a folder that will be by where you do your audits, your monthly audits, and you could fill it out there, or you can take these forms and fill it out and drop it off anytime during the month. But they have to be submitted within 30 days of the month in which it was performed. And as you can see on here, it's asking for some specific information regarding the date, what it was, and notes regarding the meeting or whatever you attended, and a little explanation about what it was. And once again, you know, I encourage you not to stretch things too far. Keep within the bounds of what this policy sets forth, because we have a responsibility to do what is beneficial to the township, and all of these things would be beneficial to township. Going outside of here is not acceptable. Any questions?
So presentations regarding what the township does, we spoke of having a presence at the market to discuss, which I've discussed with Paul, about some marketing pieces?
Yes. If you're there at that event, representing the village at a booth or a site that is purchased or paid for by the village, to be, by the township to be there, and you represent the village there for that event, so as to talk to citizens as they come by, pass out brochures, encourage them to use our services, yes, that would be covered in this.
Okay. Right.
Any other questions? Anything else? If you have, you know, if you, if you're not sure on one of these things, I would encourage you then to reach out, and either talk to Paul or me as to whether it meets the criteria or not. But I think it's pretty self-explanatory. But if not, it's always better to ask in advance rather than trying to ask for forgiveness later. Sometimes it works better the other way, but in this situation, it doesn't work well.
That's right.
Okay?
I mean, you know, it was taken well from the rest of the members of us having a presence there, not from a political standpoint, which I explained to them that that's not the purpose of us being there. It would be, we're on that side of the tracks.
Right.
Behind us is, I mean, that's Elk Grove Township, explaining what the township has to offer.
Exactly.
And that was it.
And that would be a very legitimate purpose, just like you have the Elk Grove Township, Elk Grove Village Parade coming up, and we will have a truck, the food pantry truck and the senior citizens truck in that parade. We're doing, for the reason of giving exposure to the services that we're offering, because like we've said all along, one of my biggest concerns, we're the most impactful and valuable form of government that people don't know about. We have more services that can help more people, but unfortunately, a lot of people don't know. So the more we can get out, and the more we can tell what we have and how we do it, the more people can take advantage of these services. And in a lot of ways, these services are for, are for, either for people that really need this, that have nowhere else to go, and we're their last safety net, and they should know and should come to us, or they're people like Connie deals with, that where we provide a very unique service that they can't get anywhere else, and is very important to their financial well-being as well. So, once again, that's what the encouragement is here, but once again, I also encourage you to stay within the bounds, and if there's questions as to whether it meets the criteria or not, I need to be, Paul or I need to be contacted, and we can give you a, you know, a decision on that. Okay?
Staff and I have done senior fairs to highlight the Assessor's Office, but if you're doing a senior fair or something like that, we'd be happy to participate with you.
Okay, that's a very good suggestion.
We used to have the one over there on Gobert, the senior fair at the auditorium or in the gym there at Robert Morris.
No, those are, those are awful.
Unfortunately, I mean, outside of last year, I hope that's something that continues, because this is something else that...
Right. Well, I think one of the things, so my point is, when you see something that you think we should participate in, reach out to Paul, and he'll probably talk to me, and if I say, "Yeah, let's run with it," then you'll be probably asked to, you know, you raise your hand, you'll probably be asked to manage it.
That's fine.
But we should. I mean, that's what we should do, you know? And we should, and just need to go through the proper channels and the proper approvals. Yeah, I mean, the more we can make people aware of all the very unique services we have, the better it's going to, the better it's going to be for our citizens. You know, we were just talking about that before. You know, the township is like 0.8% of your property tax bill here in, within our township. And Connie was showing how her office costs like 46 cents, 48 cents per resident, and that is a fantastic price to come in to appeal your taxes or to get your exemptions. And even for all the other services we provide, 0.8% of your property tax bill is...
Nothing.
Nothing, compared to what you're paying for all the school districts and the special assessments and the municipalities and the county. So I, those are things that, you know, I mean, that's not, that's not the reason to tell, it's the services we need to tell people about. Okay?
Your knowledge and experience is worth more than 46%.
Boy, he's sure being nice to you today.
What do you want, Dan?
It's not budget time either.
Yeah, right. So do I have a motion to approve resolution, well, the amendments, or the, yeah, the amendment, the amended resolution to 2013-6?
So moved.
I'll second.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Right, okay. Well, actually, I'll tell you what, let's do a roll call.
Trustee Narodowski?
Aye.
Trustee Wotecki?
Aye.
Trustee Dante?
Aye.
Supervisor Bussi?
Okay, I don't think there's, there being no further business, I will take a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay, there's no discussion on this. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned.